All right, I think we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We just got a little housekeeping, H-I-N-N are going to be removed from the agenda. So now it's time for any concerned citizen to speak to the council on an item that is not on the agenda. If you could come up to the microphone there and state your name.
Hello, my name is Kathy Kemfer. I'm an owner and the manager at the Village West condo or Village Homeowners Association condos on State Street and North Olive. We have an issue or concern with one of our neighbors about the number of vehicles they have on their property and how many of these vehicles are currently licensed. Of the three cars that I see them drive daily, two of them don't even have license plates at all. The third one was current in March but expired in March of 2020. And then, of course, there's the insurance question on these vehicles. I spoke with Officer Young and he told me that this was a city matter. And I asked him, driving without a current license plate, is a city matter? So anyway, I called City Hall and I left or talked to City Hall and I was gonna, I explained my issue and was told I'd get a call back. Haven't heard anything. My other question was about the city ordinance. How many vehicles can be parked on any city lot in Jefferson? I have photos of the cars that are parked there and expired plates or no plates and then the same area when the cars are gone, which is easy to do. They come and go all day. We just have issues and concerns about this and would appreciate your help and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. And I can get you with our building code inspector and we can get this all sorted out and take a look at it.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to consent items.
I move to approve the consent items.
I'll second.
Semalek.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Weetrick.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
New business, item A, public hearing on proposed sale of property at 200 East State Street.
Nick, are you gonna talk about this or should I?
Go ahead.
Okay. Really, the first three items on the agenda, A, B, and C, are kind of R-related. A is a public hearing on a specific act of entering into an agreement to sell the property that the city has at 200 East State Street. Chris Deo has come forward again with a proposal to buy that. It's sort of tied in with a project he has started to do upper level housing conversion, which would be in that building. The terms of the proposed sale are you would sell the property to him for $205,000, which is an appraisal that Nick got on the property, you know, just in the last couple of months. The city also has some money invested in tenant improvements. The city would get that money back under the existing leases that are coming in. I mean, there are some contingencies to this. I mean, we would make the agreement, but it would be subject to the contingency that Chris is able to get an award from IEDA in the amount of $435,000 to do that upper level housing conversion for the property. So that's going to be a condition. He also has to get other financing in place with the local bank and then he's also working on his tax credit package like he did on the Forge property just to the east of it. So those are kind of the conditions. So this is your public hearing. Any questions or comments? I guess you're open to them.
This is for all the apartments over at, on the other side too, right? No?
No, it's just the one building, 200 East State Street.
Okay.
A few months ago, you leased out the west half of the first floor to Heartland Bank. That's where they're at.
Mm-hmm, right.
And then there's a lease being negotiated for the east half of it, which will be with it's that co-working company.
Sure, Gravitate.
Gravitate.
And so by the time you close this, there's going to be a signed lease in place for that one. And so part of those rental payments the city will get as well to reimburse itself for part of its improvements there. So you can take comments if there are any. Otherwise, you can go ahead and close the public hearing.
I'd move to close the public hearing. Sorry.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Semalek.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Item B, consider resolution approving agreement for sale and redevelopment of property at 200 East State Street.
I just basically described what that agreement is. So it would just be a resolution to approve the agreement. It would be signed now and then it probably wouldn't close till November or December till all the other pieces come in.
I'd move to approve that resolution.
I'll second.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Weetrick.
Aye.
Semalek.
Aye.
Item C, consider resolution approving economic development forgivable loan agreement, whichever city view properties.
This is the award that Chris is applying for from IEDA. If he gets the award, he's applying for $435,000. If it's approved, there will be a loan by IEDA to the city. It's forgivable after approximately five years from the time the city gets it. The city then would enter into this forgivable loan agreement to loan that money to Chris's company and that would be forgivable over five years shortly after the IEDA forgives the city. While this is in place, whether it's going to be mortgage and then Chris would guarantee this, while this, the city is potentially liable on this for five years and it will count towards your allowable debt limit. Nick and I had a phone conversation last week with your city financial advisor from Piper Jaffray and he did not seem concerned about it. It would only be about 3% of your debt limit is what this would amount to. We also visited with your finance committee, Harry and Matt, and they're fully aware of it. So any questions on that one? Chris is here, you can answer your questions, I'm sure, if you got any.
I can give a little more background too. This is the project we'd come roughly a month ago. I had talked about the idea with what we're trying to do here. Lots of work over the last few weeks to go through, more time spent with properties, with layouts, ballpark costs, kind of everything that goes in the background to try to put together a really competitive application. One, a huge thank you to Nick Sorensen, city officials, just as we've gone through. Bob has put in a lot of time helping us as we put all this together in a really short window of time. So thank you for that. Carla Janing as well with Region 12 has been fantastic with her understanding of the CDBG process to go after this. So we're hopeful in the pursuit of this grant. When we had spoken before, we'd been looking at two, possibly three properties over this whole process. We've narrowed in on the 200 East State, East State Street property as the one we're going to go after with this one, intent being let's be, have everything lined up and effectively stick the landing on this project. We think this is a program that's going to be around for quite a while and so hopefully be one of the first cities to go through, have a really successful one and really set the stage maybe for some future potential projects as well. So appreciate the opportunity to pursue it. Everything is due at the end of this week and so we're finalizing a lot of grant application materials and then we will submit and see what happens.
Just to echo what Chris said about it being new, just IEDA does not have its loan documents prepared yet, so Chris has agreed to do whatever they say, so.
(laughing) That's because Bob made me, huh?
So was it just going to be too much, did you think, with all of the?
We were, we were tracking for, trying to get two properties and it was last week, there is, there was several things that just happened all at once and we were on the, on the border between one and two and eventually we just got to the point where we thought, let's not stretch it, try to do too much and create a scenario where things can't happen just because the financing isn't there. And so backed off, decided we'll focus on the single property and, and do it, do it right with this building and hopefully then create a really good example of how this should be done for a future opportunity.
This might be a foregone conclusion. Oh yeah, sorry, thank you. This might be a foregone conclusion, but if the grant does not happen, does that mean the city would still own that property then? Because that was a contingency with this agreement, correct?
Yep, correct. And that's, that's how with these where there's so much, the cost to do these upper story rehabs are significant. That's why the state's put together this, this grant program. And so with this and then some of these other financing sources, this is probably the, this is the biggest one and the one that is going to take the most effort to acquire, but making sure we've got the financing in place because no one wants to have a property that changes hands but still can't have anything happen with it.
It seems promising because if this is so brand new, that they'd want to pilot something, you know, that, that has a lot of potential for success.
Yep, and there, there's two pilots going on right now. Carla and Region 12 actually is helping with one of those and there's been some learning opportunities there that they've incorporated for this, but there still is, like Bob said, there's still a lot that IEDA is putting, IEDA is putting together with this as we speak. We've had numerous conversations with the staff at the state. They've been great. They've given us some great feedback. And so, as I said, I think that we're, we're sitting in a good spot right now. It is a competitive grant. We don't know how many others are going to go after this, so we'll see once we submit. But certainly doing all we can to make this as competitive as possible.
And so they probably have not given you a timeline either then, huh?
Not a definitive timeline. They're not sure how long it'll take on their end to review everything. The hope is within a couple of months, we would know back from them. And then there's some more efforts on the, I mean, once that's secure, then we have to go and secure kind of the other pieces that, that make all this possible. So it's still several months before we'd be moving into the significant piece of construction. But this is probably the, this is one of those big hurdles to cross is to win this grant.
I just need a motion to approve the agreement that passed as you wish.
I move to approve this resolution.
I'll second.
Aye.
Weetrick.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
And Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Item D, consider approval to employ Diane Kennedy as part-time temporary utility clerk at 25 an hour.
Here's, here's my problem with that. Just a couple of weeks ago, we set 22 an hour for guys with the PD coming in when they have as much training needed to be certified as anybody. I've heard, I can't back it up, that she was willing to do it for 18 to 20 an hour. I'm not sure where we come up with 25. I just think that's an awful lot for a part-time position. That's twice what we're going to pay the full-time person.
I don't, I mean, I'm fine with lots of numbers, but if it's part-time, then that doesn't have any benefits or anything, right? That's just straight whatever the salary is.
My only, my only concern with it is it seems like we kind of do these piecemeal and I think we need to get more consistency with how we do these things. I mean, take out Diane Kennedy, whatever the position is, I just think, you know, we go from 18 to 20, 22 for the PD the other day and then 25 just seems, like we need more consistency in that kind of a field.
I guess that would be a question I don't have an answer to.
I don't know.
Yeah, I know when, when I, in fact, I, I'd respond.
(inaudible).
Yeah.
For personnel.
Yeah, and I mean, and I acknowledged in my response on this that, yeah, this, this is a little higher than I thought we were, where we would be, but as Darren points out, you know, there, there are no benefits associated with this. We know that she can, that the continuity is there. I mean, she can move right into this without any training whatsoever. We're going to an outside part-timer and have to provide training, so there was some benefit there. And then the intent and, I mean, I've gotten pretty, pretty much conclusion from, from Roxanne and Mike that we're talking 30 hours or less a week. So if we keep it in that 25 to 30 hour per range, yeah, still on the high side. We're not doubling up on anything here, quite frankly, because Teresa's gone and so that, that wage and salary goes away. So I'm not sure if it's quite as big as, as what it looks like at the outset, but no, I, and I agree that 25 is really on the high side of where I thought we would be. But after thinking about it some, I said, well, if that's what it's going to take to get her, we can minimize or optimize the total number of hours that she puts in, in a week, knowing that she can come in on day one and take, take that position and hopefully we're going to get it filled fairly quickly. So this is not something that's going to be a long-term thing, so.
And I think if I'm hearing you guys correctly, it's not necessarily the number, it's how we're getting there.
Yeah.
That maybe we need some more structure on how do we decide part-time values and, and things like that to be more consistent and, I mean, it is the number as well.
Right.
But how we're getting to that conclusion.
Well, that's where I agree with Pat that, you know, there's something to do. And then I guess the other things I would say is, you know, it's part-time, it's temporary and I don't know, I feel if we were going to negotiate this, we kind of had to do that before we got to this point, I think.
Sure. So we have it out there. Consider approval for Diane, part-time utility clerk, 25 an hour is what we've got out there now. We just need to decide what we'd like to do.
I move to approve item D.
I'll second.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Sloan.
No.
Weetrick.
Aye.
Semalek.
No.
Item E, GCDC Quarterly Report and Request for Funds.
You've got my monthly status. I'm going to hand you something that's, I think, a little different, because I've already done this before. You've been funding us for a lot of years and I thought I might show you how we, the stewards of the funding you provide us, how they've been gathering lists of the projects, the money you've given us over the years have gone into. And my hope is that you'll see that we've been relatively productive with the funding support that you've provided us. You have to look at it now, you have to look at it today, chances. Kind of a historic summary of what we've done as a group over the years with funding. Anyway, it's just a historic summary of what we've done with some of the funding you've given us over the years and I, and I hope you think we've been productive. We've tried to do the, the best what we've, we've had and I think some of the projects you'll see in there have been very successful as far as the use of the money. I also put in there a little, a little summary piece that we're still working on, the Lincoln Corridor thing. We were getting close to some opportunities on there and Link at one time had asked us to put, or me, to put together a kind of a summary of where Green County stands and be able to support it. And as I put it together, I started thinking, gosh, we're in really good shape. And so I, I put the write-up in there because I think it gives you an idea of really where we are and not only for the Lincoln Corridor, but just where we are positioned as far as moving forward and attracting not only technology companies, but other companies to our, our community as well. I think we're, we're in good shape. Last, I had a few, few things I was going to mention that are, that might, some of them may be in the monthly status, some of them may not, because to be honest, we've been pretty active recently and a lot of things have been going on. One thing I really want to call your attention to is in September, Region 12, through some efforts of all of the economic development people in our region, we're going to get $1.85 million through Region 12 for loan funds for business expansion and business growth. That's a pretty big number. As a matter of fact, it's by far the largest number that any region in the, in the state's going to get as far as money for, for new loans and new businesses. We got the most because we've used the most and we've been the most aggressive region in Iowa. So because of that, we were rewarded with the largest chunk of money that's come through. It's, it basically gets back to some of the, the federal aid that came out during, during the main COVID crisis and it's, it's to help businesses regroup and, and to reestablish. But the important thing to know about this is the interest rate's going to be 0%. So we're already starting to talk to a bunch of businesses about that. As a matter of fact, I've been talking with Chris about the, the public house and some, some opportunities there. So just, I wanted you to be sure, be sure you're aware of it. I'll give you more details as they come out. Right now, they're still structuring all the, the final details for it, but it's going to be very, very attractive loan funds. And once again, you've got $1.85 million that can be used in, in our region. So that's a really a, a very positive award and by, once again, by far the largest in the state for any region. Another thing that also relates to Region 12 is it's coming and I'll try to do this as quickly as I can. I've been spending the last couple of days, there's a, there's a market research application. It, and the name of it's called Size Up, that allows small communities who have businesses who want to open to be able to get really amazingly accurate economic comparative data for that business. Say I want to open a coffee shop in Jefferson. They can provide real detailed data of who the competition is, what the average wages are, what the sales have been, and you can pick the region. It could be within our region, it could be within Iowa, it could be within the Midwest. You can tailor it to any way you want it. Region 12, because we've been kind of successful and had funding available, is going to pay for it. It'll go on their site, but it'll have, we'll be able to link to it and we'll eventually, I'm 90% sure the city's going to want a link to that too, have that link on their site. That way, as I'm working with, with new businesses and anybody's working with new businesses, we can, we can, I can help them and kind of work them through of how to get an enormous amount of really accurate research information on, that affects their business as they begin to open. A good example, once again, is, is the public house. There's a lot of information that can tell you salaries and wages and competition and growth rates and those kind of things for, for competitive areas as, as we establish what the competitive area is. So that's coming and we should have that probably in another four weeks also. So that's going to be a, a really a good tool for us too. I also might mention that with, with Regan now on board, we've started to meet with her to give her an update and see what we can do to help support her. We, we still have a goal of trying to organize our website so that people, when they get on Google searches and any other search, always come to the same site at one time. That's something really important to our community. We, we believe, and if you remember back when Chatterkick was doing some work for us, they believe that, that the city of Jefferson website, especially the way you've, you've redone it, is really a good landing spot. And so that's kind of what we're going to focus on is being the landing spot, whereas they can then go out to GCDC, then go out to the Chamber, to Main Street, to other of the sites from that. Also, that leads into some marketing plans. We're hoping to maybe get started, maybe November or December this year, to talk about how to market this community. We're at a point with all our assets that we need to really be kind of aggressive with, through social media to advertise what we've got. We spent a lot of time building up all these things and they're now here and we now have them and we now need to leverage them. We can get these out to the, to wider communities and, and wider areas and that's a, a marketing plan. So that's something we're looking to move forward with in the future. One last little point, we have set our annual meeting date for, for our GCDC annual meeting. We're gambling on September 23rd out of Wild Rose. We got our fingers crossed and we hope it's going to happen. The new CEO of the hospital will be speaking. We'll have a presentation on the middle school, which by the way, is moving along really well. So we have, we have our speakers kind of in place, several speakers in place. We have the date and time. If worse comes to worse, we'll still, still try to do something from a Zoom basis, but we're going to be positive about it and hope that things don't shut down before the 23rd of September. Anyway, thank you so much for all your help and all your support and hopefully those handouts are, are of interest to you.
Thank you.
I'd move to approve the funding for GCDC.
I'll second.
Aye.
Weetrick.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Semalek.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Item M, consideration of approval of certificate of final completion for the relocation of 243rd Street for airport runway extension.
So this, this is for the road relocation project. Contractor completed the work on June 11th. We had, I think, two meetings ago, we did a partial payment for all that work but retainage, basically. This is just stating that all the work is done, all the punch list items were completed and that the facility has been given back to the, to the owner. For, once this is approved, the next meeting, we would have the change order to adjust contract prices to the final amounts and then the final payment. So everything is done and we agree that they did it according to plans. We recommend approval.
I'll make that motion to approve. I'll second.
Semalek.
Aye.
Weetrick.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Item G, consider resolution approving FAA grant agreement in the amount of $1,705 for airport runway extension project.
Okay, this is the grant agreement from the FAA for the 1.7 million. That is the part of the supplemental funding from the FAA. It was that billion dollars that was put out for the whole country and we applied for the grants to do the, the road relocation construction, the runway design and the runway construction. This is, this is that grant to cover the design and construction on the runway. Yeah, this one does not cover the full amount of what we have for bids from the construction that we have. So there is the second grant that we are waiting for, which was item H. Once that comes in, then, once that's approved, then we can approve the construction contract, hopefully in two weeks. We were hoping to see that yesterday or today, it didn't come through. But this one is for the larger portion, but we don't want to enter in any construction contract until both are in hand, basically. And all of those funds at the 1.7 are the 100% paid by FAA. There's no match on those.
I'd move to approve the grant agreement.
Second.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Weetrick.
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Zomalek?
Aye.
Item J, second reading of an ordinance adding Chapter 48 noise control. Has anybody heard anything?
Not really. I mean, someone asked me some of the details and wanted it in a two-second blur, but I think they were just curious.
Mark, you hearing anything?
A few comments from the folks, positive.
Good.
I've had just a couple, but they were primarily clarification things, and yeah, I've gotten nothing negative back.
Sam, a couple of positive remarks, a couple of basic questions.
Nothing negative.
Good.
I will make a motion to put it on second reading. Can we waive the third in the same motion?
No, not the same motion. Put it on the second reading.
I'll put it on the second reading.
I'll second.
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
And Jackson?
Aye.
If you want to wait, you may go ahead and not motion.
I would ask that we have the third reading, just because it was so contested right up front, just to give everybody an opportunity. If I don't, I just want everybody to be sure that they have plenty of time to come bring it to us if they have a problem with it before we actually, but it's your decision.
I'm fine with that if you guys are. Yeah.
Item K, approve changes to scope of work for CDBG Upper Story Rental Project Grant Application.
Thank you for all of your comments here tonight. We just have a couple changes with the change in the scope of work since the public hearing. I reached out to IEDA, and they asked that I just read these couple little statements so everyone understands. The project will now consist of one building located at 200 East State Street in Jefferson, Iowa. Renovations will include the addition of three upper-story rental units. Two of the units will be designated for tenants at or below 80% of the LMI. Total project is estimated at $982,706. The city is requesting $435,000 in CDBG funds, which includes $25,000 for grant administration and $410,000 for construction, architectural, and engineering costs, which is what Chris talked about to you earlier. So it's a little bit redundant, but they can check their box after this, so. Any questions?
No. No, thank you.
Okay.
I'd move to approve those changes.
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Zomalek?
Aye.
And Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item L, approve Region 12 COG as grant administrator for CDBG Upper Story Rental Project contingent upon grant award.
What we're doing here is, part of the grant application process is showing the readiness of the project to proceed forward. So by having certain items in place, the grant looks and will be ready to move forward in a consistent path. So by approving the administrative services contingent upon the grant award, we're able to gain those readiness points in that category.
I'd move to approve.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Zomalek?
Aye.
Item N, M, consider approval to sign HUD 2880 Federal Assurances and Environmental Review for CDBG Upper Story Rental Project Grant Application.
Yes, these are all three federal documents that are required for the application. The first, the 2880, is the disclosure of how many HUD funds are being applied for, which is the $435,000. So that's a certification that you understand that's the dollar value. The second form is the Federal Assurances, which contains the federal contract language that shows you will abide by those using CDBG funds. That is part of our administrative responsibilities, is to make sure that all those are followed. And then the Environmental Review Record is just what it sounds like for that building. It contains the pertinent information on the noise, the asbestos, explosives, underground tanks, airports, scenic rivers, and endangered species, all in one really information-packed document. Any questions on those forms? Okay.
If the two of those apartments need to be within 80% of the LMI guidelines, will the renters then be eligible for housing subsidies? Is that how it works?
Two of the apartments will be designated for a low to moderate income family. With the income limits in Green County for a single person, that's around $38,500. So that covers a large percentage of your population, and at those incomes, they would not need any type of subsidy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. I'd move to approve the signing.
I'll second.
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Zomalek?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Item O, animal shelter update.
I will. Harry's going to pass down some paperwork there. There's a plan there that we had originally, and then there's also a letter that I sent out to everybody in the county. This winter, I took time and wrote a personal letter to everybody in the county that was in the phone book that I hadn't already gotten a donation from for the animal facility, and also a couple of cross-reference lists of other people. So I've touched base with everybody in the county, except that you all know that in a phone book today, anybody who has a cell phone and doesn't have a landline is not in the phone book. So that's why I tried to use two other lists to try to get ahold of everybody that I could. So when I did that, we collected $170,000 toward the animal facility, just on this mailing alone. But it also tells me that we've touched a lot of people, and also the pool's getting smaller as to who's left to give to the facility to make it work. With that in mind, I called together the PAWS ladies, and also the fundraising committee, and also our grant writing committee, and we had kind of a sit-down talk about where we're going and how we're going to get there. The facility, as you know, originally proposed estimates are $1.134 million to build the facility, and we are now, after this $170,000 that I've collected, counting pledges and cash, that's counting both of them, we are at $592,000, $592,000 that we've collected. Out of that $592, approximately $170,000 is in pledges, the rest is in cash already. The pledges amount to, out of that $170,000, there's three major pledges that are in that $170,000, and they include Alice Walters at $50,000, the casino at $67,000, and the Home State Bank at $25,000. So out of the $170,000, approximately $145,000 is between those three people who are pledging to pay the money for that. So the amount of money that is pledged, that is pretty, in my opinion, pretty doggone secure, is a high percentage. After meeting with all these people, basically then, I also went to Perry, and Perry, if you, just to recall, three sisters from Perry came to me when I was having the informational meetings on the animal facility, and they asked if they could sit in on one of our meetings because they'd heard I'd done a lot of work on it. And I told them they could, come, listen up. They did that, and after that meeting, they kind of hung around, and they said, we have a problem. And I said, well, what's your problem? And they said, I want to steal everything you have because we want, we need to build an animal facility in Perry. And I said, well, whatever animals you take on the county line is not going to hurt us, so I'd be happy to show you what I have. So I actually went to Perry and sat in on a meeting of their 20 people that are on their committee. Included, they invited the architect that we had already done our plans with, and then they took all of that, were very excited about it, and as it turned out, one of the three sisters gave $2.2 million to build their facility. They have a facility that's about, almost not quite twice the size of what ours would be. And then she, in addition, gave a million dollars to run it. So they have their facility now built, and it sits, as you go on 141, going around the corner on the right-hand side, and they have just got it operational. They wanted to have a grand opening, but because of COVID, they have put that off. But it is a fantastic facility. Again, it's bigger than what we want, but it's basically along the concepts of what we wanted to have in this facility. They spent $2.2 million to build it. Okay. With all that in mind, we are worried that because of COVID, because of a new learning center, because of the new school, because of all the other charities that are out there and good causes that are out there, the ARC, everything that's going on in the community, and people are really supportive of all the good causes that are out there. They're very supportive of us. When I can send out a mailing and get $170,000, you know that people are very supportive. And the numbers that we have, by the way, are very supportive of what we're trying to do. But the reality of it is that it's a ways off if we want to stick to our guns on what we wanted to have. And so with that in mind, I also had looked at Mark Peters' building, and I sat down with Mark and asked Mark if he wouldn't mind sitting down with me and being confidential about what he's got in his building and so forth. Tell me about it. And his footprint for his new vet building out there is very similar to ours, if you look at our footprint, but without the garage on it. So if you look at the footprint of our facility that we wanted to build, if you take the garage off it, you have almost identical to what Mark built in the size of his building. Now, that's obviously not what we want in ours because we have a different idea of what we need to have for the animal facility as compared to a veterinary facility. But it also gave me some good ideas as to what was available out there. Now, Mark built that without having architects because he doesn't have to have architects. We have to have architects because the city has to have it bid, and you have to have an architect have a plan, and you have to have bids put in on it to receive the facility and have it built. So some of the things that Mark was able to get away with in his building, we will not be able to get away with in our building because we have to meet the state specs on what has to happen in every phase of the building. So our building is going to be more expensive than what his was when he got done, and we understand that. But on the other hand, Mark also had to put a lot of medical stuff in his building that we don't have to put in ours. So when we farmed all that out, and then Mark also had to buy his land. And so all those things into consideration, and to be very honest with you, the last four years has bought some new technology to the metal building industry, especially when it considers the amount of insulation in the roof that's now being put on all these metal buildings. And the best description I can give, so it kind of gives you a mental idea of what's happening in metal buildings, is they're taking a mechanical device and sealing the roof like you would a pop can. You crimp it and seal it all the way around so that the roof floats on top of your building with insulation underneath it through expansion and contraction with heat, but it's totally sealed so that it can't leak. So there's all kinds of things that are happening today that were not happening just five years ago. Not only that, but the buildings are cheaper to build because of it, labor-wise and everything else. So when we got to looking at it, our plan was to take the money that we have, which is just under $600,000, and see if we can't build a building by making some changes. And the changes are that we aren't going to have a concrete, we aren't going to have a block building, we're going to have a metal building. Now, what does that do? Well, the very honest truth is, when you're building an animal facility, the longevity of a metal building compared to a block building is going to be less. That's the bottom line. The second thing is, labor-wise, you can save a lot of money by building a metal building. The other problem is, for the expense of the original design was odor. For example, in Perry's building of $2.2 million, their odor control system and their ventilation system is $386,000 of the $2.2 million. So odor is a big problem that they have accomplished by using $386,000 to accomplish it. Now, again, that's twice the size of what we wanted to build, but still, even if you cut it in half, $190,000 to control your odor. So we're going to have to give that up. Now, when I say we're going to have to give that up if we build a metal building, it means that there's some other things we can do to help ourselves in the design of the building, so we would change some of our building as you look at it. And that is to make three separate areas, one for cats, one for dogs, and one for people. And we run three different furnaces, three different systems, and try to keep those areas as separate as possible by rooming off and keeping the cats in certain rooms and keeping the dogs in different rooms, and everywhere that people are, have a different ventilation system to try to control the odor. Will it do the job of a $190,000 unit? No. Will it cost about $20,000 to $50,000? Yes. So instead of spending $190,000, we're going to spend somewhere between $20,000 and $50,000 to get that accomplished. Will it be as good? No, it will not. The other thing that, excuse me, was really important is moisture, and we still believe we can control that by using a system of putting down the disinfectant with water and collecting it immediately by vacuuming it up, and the system runs about $10,000, and we would still have that in our plans to control the humidity level in the building as much as we possibly can. All the other things that we have in the building would stay the same as far as we want to control the disease in the facility by isolation and by doing the proper things as we collect the animals and keeping it so that the animal that comes in does not infect the other animals that are there. So using proper building of where we're putting the rooms and how we're controlling the incoming animals, we're still be able to do all of those things. So what are we going to try to do to cut down on the cost? Well, the first thing, again, is getting rid of the odor system, making the building slightly smaller by cutting off the garage. We're going to lose some storage. And at the same time, to get back that storage area that we still need, we're going to have to cut down some of the number of kennels that we're going to have compared to what we've got listed here, and we're going to have to cut down on some of the cat areas by just the simple size of it. of it. So I still think it would be adequate? I think it would be adequate. Do we want to go crazy cutting down things? No, we don't. We want to do it as best we can with what we have. Do I still think it'll be a really great facility? Yes, I do. I've talked to Greg Carey at considerable length, you know, he has built the McAtee Building, he built Mark Peters' Building through American Builders. And we've talked to other builders, Dave and I have, and looked at some of their plans as well. We think that we can get things accomplished by talking to the architects and saying, this is what we need to have you look at. We don't want the architects to write something so outlandish that the normal person can't bid on it to keep the cost down. So that's going to be my big push at this point is, I don't want the architect to write something so tough that a normal person can't bid on it. So I still haven't talked to our engineer here that's sitting here because I haven't had a chance, I know he's been out of town and so forth. But the architects, originally we're going to charge us $62,000, they have cut their fees to $39,000 for a smaller facility. And I haven't talked to him about what their fee, but his would be in addition to the $39,000 for construction of the facility. So what do I need? Well, I need to get your opinion of what to do. I've asked the opinions of the major donors who have already said they wanted to give to the facility as it was. Every single one of them at this point has said they still want to go with what we can do. They still want to build a $600,000 building. They need something, they want something. There hasn't been a single person who has said, I don't want to give the money now, I don't want to give it if you're not going to build a $1.1 million building. Everybody has said, we want to go ahead, we want you to get something that's workable. So what do we need to do? Well, we need to figure out the finances, we need to get you guys on board as to far as questions. We need to find out how you're going to handle because we have basically $170,000 that's in pledges. Actually, again, I figure that 50 plus 25, 75, and that's going to be easily picked up by me just making a phone call to say that we now need the money to start. But I need your approval to get with the architects. I need to sign a thing that says basically I'm going to use them, that they're going to start the plans to get it to the point where we bid it and then have bids on it to see where the bids are at. Hopefully they'll be in our ballpark of what we want and then proceed. GCDC still owns the land, so we'd also need to make sure that I get with them and they deed the land over to the city so that we'd be ready to go on that. I guess that's probably the biggest things that I need to accomplish with you today. I would then sit down with the architects and make sure that they have the plans straight so that we can make sure that we get everything we still want at the smaller size of facility, which means some rearranging. Probably means we have to do a little changing on the, where the cat, if you look at the cat condo area, again, because I can't have some of the cat condos in this people area, I have to have a wall between them, we have to change a little bit of design there. So we'll just have to take their instructions. Also, if you look at the drawing there where the garage is on, there's a little hallway there, we'd actually move that hallway toward the other end so that we have a bigger storage area there and that's where we're going to lose a few kennels at the opposite end and use, lose a little bit of the cat area. Yes.
Don, how did you decide what would be the ideal numbers of dog kennels versus cat facility, cat condos?
As far as, well, I-
Original numbers, then how did you decide what to cut it each?
What to cut? Well, basically it would just, if you look at it, the number of kennels would probably be cut down four or five compared to what's there. We'd still keep the isolation kennels at the end, we would still keep the entry kennels at the end, at the starting point there. Where you see the, right across where the entryway coming in, where the reception area is, where you see a cat room there, we would cut that down. And then where it has the big U-shaped cat area, instead of having that great big U shape because that's open to the people area as far as air, we would make like three separate rooms for cat cages there.
Do you have numbers, like what you're proposing to cut it down to?
Yeah. We would have room, let's see, we'd have room for three rooms and each of those rooms would have two, four, six, eight, 10. So you'd have room for about 30 cats.
What was the, what was the, originally?
Originally, I think it was 42.
And I don't mean this tongue in cheek at all, but is there any way at all to move something else to keep those numbers as high as possible?
To keep the cat numbers as high? That I could try to do with the architect when we design it. I guess at this point in time, I don't really know exactly where he wants to put the three different furnace systems, but my idea would be where we had a quiet room on there, if you look there where it says quiet room, we would take that quiet room and get rid of it and add that on to the cat area that we're going to lose to try to keep the cat numbers up.
Gotcha. Sounds good.
Thank you.
You're still planning on having a dog park too, right?
The dog park is still in the plans to do. In reality, the dog park is not as expensive as people might think it is. Really, the dog park is a fence and then to level the areas and make them workable with a path and so forth. So the dog park was still run between $25,000 and $50,000 as far as the fence and the area. It's really in totality, it's a very small part of the whole project.
Right.
Cost wise, yes.
I think it's a thing that people really want.
Yes. No, we would definitely still have the dog park.
Is it necessary to do much groundwork? I mean, as far as you're talking about leveling some or?
That's a question when he gets done, I'd have him answer that maybe. Since they have already, because this area was already sectioned off and they already have like all the water basins and all that figured in, I think it's simply a matter of figuring out where we want to put the building and then I was surprised at the number of trees that have grown in just three years out there that weren't there three years ago, just the trees that are four feet tall, you know? But I think with the heavy equipment, that's-
So this, you know, just like with other things we've been doing and approving and readings and stuff like that, this will have to come in bits and pieces too. Is the first piece to approve bits where an architect is at where we would go from?
That would be your first step.
Don, how many dogs did you say you had room for then?
Pardon?
How many dogs?
The actual kennels, you mean?
Yeah.
There's two kennels for when they bring the animal in that are in the bring in area. Then there's two kennels for isolation. And then there will be, depending on exactly how far I have to put that furnace, there'll be seven or eight more after that. So you'll have approximately 12 total kennels, counting the two isolation and the two that bring in the animals as they come in.
I think they have six now.
What's that?
I think there's six at the pound now.
Yes, there's six at the pound now. And again, just so you know what the national statistics are, the number of dogs that are coming to animal facilities is maintaining or getting lower and the number of cats is going up. So the trends, that's the trends nationwide for those two areas. And again, just so you understand, we have isolation areas for the cats as well because the cats carry five times as many diseases as the dogs. They're harder to care for than you might think initially. So I guess I'm looking for some kind, I don't know if you need to make a resolution, I'm looking for a resolution that I should proceed with the architect to get him going on that and get him figuring it out and sitting down with him and getting it accomplished.
They really can't take any action tonight, it's just for presentation. So I think if you want to proceed, it'd be talk to Mike and tell him you want something put on the agenda for next meeting and really the first step would probably be retaining that architect to design the plans, so.
That's correct. Yes.
So we need to have him do a formal proposal to us, city council, what his services are going to be, how much?
I have, he has sent me a contract, so I can get you that.
Okay. So I don't need to act on it the next meeting.
Question?
Yeah.
I know the county is looking at different facilities to take in vicious animals, is there any plan to have an isolation room for those particular animals, shelter at all?
Well, the isolation room would take care of any animal for that, for that part of it. The isolation room is exactly that, it is a room that's separate that has two different kennels in it as far as the dogs for that consideration. And also the two, the other room is, there's two kennels in it for when the police or whatever bring the animals to there, that they could use those as well. So I think you could certainly use it for that. I guess that depends on what you want to do as far as taking those animals in or what the, I don't know what you as a city council have in mind for saying yes or no to that type of thing, but the rooms would definitely serve for that, yes.
That would kind of be, when we get this done way back, when we proposed it, there would be an board to this with certain people on it, I can't remember who, we got it wrote down somewhere. That would be a decision more for them probably to at least expand on and look at.
The county would be putting money into this facility, so I didn't know if they have been contacted yet or know about any of this stuff or if they need to know.
No, no. Right. Yeah, they don't know. Well, I mean, they don't know what our new plan is, so I haven't approached them yet. So, yeah. That's one of the next things I need to do here too. Yep.
Don, I sure appreciate it and I'm sure we all do. I'm sure that this has, you know, a little bit of bittersweet to it. You know, that you had this idea of something that's now just through certain necessities had to pull back. But I certainly appreciate that you've done that. And I think that this is going to be a good thing to move forward and to have something.
We just, we just have to have something. You know, the facility we have now is just-
Right.
I don't know what, I don't even know how to describe it anymore. And the volunteers sooner or later are just going to say, I'm done. I mean, they're just saints for taking care of what they've been doing.
I just wanted to echo what Darren was saying and I think, I think you had an ideal situation and you did a lot of research and aimed really high, which I think was the right thing to do. And you may not have gotten, even what you've gotten so far, if you hadn't have done that. So I hope that you and the rest of that board doesn't take to, you know, hang your heads at all about where you're having to adapt to because I think it's still going to be a phenomenal and like we've all stated, much over needed. So we're all excited to see it move forward. So thank you for all your-
And really, if you get a chance, Mark Peters spent a lot of time with me. If you get a chance to thank him, be sure and do that because he was very open. You know, I, I'm not sure I would have been quite as open as what he was with me. I mean, he really honestly, he told me every single thing and what he paid for it and so forth, so I had a great idea, I knew exactly where, where I'm not going to have to spend the money that he did and vice versa, where I know I'm going to have to spend more money than what he did to get it accomplished, so.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Don.
Reports?
The runway extension project, like I said, hopefully in two weeks, we'll have the second grant so we can move forward with approving the construction contract on that. Chestnut water main, all the water main is in, they should be doing their testing this week. And if everything passes there, they'll start services next week. We are going to have some additional costs on that one due to the removals just based on where the water main had to be put in with all the existing utilities out there. So we had some additional removals that had to be happening there. The trails project, they're working on the Central Avenue portion, most of that concrete, except for maybe a few pieces here and there, should be in by the end of this week. And then they'll work on grading, should be starting on the Greenwood portion here in a couple of weeks. The wastewater treatment facility, report and planning for that improvement project started, we had an initial meeting with the IDNR about a week and a half ago, getting all that stuff in place and everything's progressing on that, so.
All right, thank you. Mike?
We talked about that part-time position, just give you a little update on utility building clerk, we got about a dozen applications, we're going to interview six people starting on Friday, and then some more on Monday, then we hope to have a decision very quickly after that so we can get this position filled, hopefully depending on how much people need to give notice, whoever the successful candidate is, that we could get it filled by mid to late August.
Thank you. Bob?
No report.
Oksan? Dave?
Uh, no report.
Pat? Darren?
Dave and I met earlier this week about cats, we just kind of touched base. Then, and I think we'll meet again this week to kind of do that again. And then you arranged for a Zoom meeting, Mr. Mayor, with some interested parties that I was part of too.
Alley Cat Allies?
Alley Cats and Animal Rescue League.
Yep.
And then I went to the PAWS meeting and I think that my impression from PAWS and speaking with alley cats and stuff like that is that they'd like to, well, I mean, I don't know how much approval the city needs, but we know that 50 cats were TNR'd before, they'd like to do that ongoing if they can find the funds. I called Callie Gerber, or she called me and we talked for a while and then I've emailed her information, but she never got back to me again about what grant things are out there. I have some other ideas too that I'll talk with Dave about beyond TNR, about other things with pet ownership and stuff like that. I emailed everyone some, one idea, but then I have another idea too, so.
Sure. Matt?
I'm on the Green Gaming Board, which we don't usually have many updates for, but I just wanted to comment that they did, as it was mentioned, they did agree to continue the same funds that they agreed to for the animal shelter, even with the cutback on the budget. So just that they were very supportive of that and are excited to be a big part of that project still, so. And then Park and Rec meeting, with the new computer system we have, we can look and see user ship times, the different days, the different times of the days and see when it's busiest. And with it being summer now, and of course, everything's off right now as it is, but we basically voted to start closing at nine o'clock during the summers up till about Labor Day to see, or to save some money compared to 9:30 because it's basically nobody there that late. So save some, saves the city some money in that way and then, and then go back to 9:30 come Labor Day and reevaluate a few months after that and see if being open that late is still necessary, so that's it.
Yeah, we had a Streets Water Sewer Sanitation Committee meeting this past Tuesday. Mike, it might be helpful too to, I see we didn't get minutes of that, but I, because I'm just going to touch on a couple of things in there, but if you'll send those minutes out to the, to the council, they'll pick up the other points. Like the primary thing I want to cover is with water, sewer, waste collection, the recycling, and now a new one, potentially cardboard recycling from commercial sources. We talked about all of those things. We talked about all of those things at the last meeting, and one of the primary things we talked about was the need to adjust the rates. Now, we've done that fairly regularly with water and sewer, I mean, it'll be one year at a time, and there's times, I know it's probably gone close to two years, but a year and a half, but that's just a pretty normal, regular thing, is review it, and that's worked well. Haven't done the same thing with waste collection, recycling, and in fact, the cardboard, the commercial cardboard thing doesn't even exist right now. You know, that came into play when cardboard had a value, so we're picking it up, but we were able to capture the dollars coming out the other end. Well, those dollars don't come back anymore, so we're, yep.
Clarify just one thing, that was when New Opportunities was, not New Opportunities...
Genesis.
Genesis, thank you. When Genesis was picking it up, so the city wasn't even picking it up at all, so that's completely changed with them, you know, going away and us taking over, so part of it.
Yep. So we've, Dave Moreland's done a lot of work on, particularly on the sanitation, aside the waste collection, and also the cardboard collection. He's on vacation this week, but going to have Mike, probably Melody, possibly, let's take a look, plug those rates in and see what that turns into as far as total dollars, that way we can compare that with the revenues and with the expenses, and know whether we're about right where we should be. And part of the issue is, Bob, I think you gave me this number, that our waste collection rates, I think last, the last increase we had was like 2006. I think that's what I wrote down, and the recycling, all the way back to 2008. So as we come to grips on what those new rates should be now, we probably need to think about how we take a look at those on a more frequent basis, on an annual or a biannual basis, so that we can kind of keep pace with this. Because particularly with the sanitation, recycling, we're falling behind. And that's all I've got.
All right, thank you. I know I formed a committee to look into decks, there's people that were curious about building decks on the front of houses, so, you know, Harry and Pat have gathered some information and talking with Mike.
P&amp;Z would have input on that, have you talked to P&amp;Z, planning its own commission?
That's what I was just going to bring up, that they're going to get with them next for the next step.
You saw the head of standing committee already for that, to do that.
Mm-hmm. Yep, they're going to get with them next and go from there. And on police, we've accepted Officer Jackson's resignation, and we've got Mark going to Academy this next month.
Yes, this is first phase of the...
Yep. We'll have another PD meeting coming up, so just kind of be thinking on retention, things like that, things that we can do to keep people here, and we'll be looking at our options for hiring.
We need to have one spot to fill then.
Not including Officer Jackson's or?
It would be Officer Jackson's.
It would be his spot, yep.
Okay.
Yep. That's all I got. We're done.